Alright, well, good morning. Good to see everybody. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, good. It's hard to hear up here, so it's a little foggy. If we can, we're gonna actually start off the same way we did session one, because of part of our text today, we wanna kinda tie this together. So if you can, if you're able, can you go ahead and stand up? And we are going to read the Lord's Prayer together, okay? Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive others through his acts against us. And we will not be tempted, or deliver us from evil, for thine is the new and power and glory forever and ever. So we're actually gonna tie, obviously, in our text today, we're talking about the New Testament, and about spiritual warfare for that. And so we're gonna tie those two ideas together today. This idea of the kingdom, but also deliver us from evil. And what does that actually mean for us in the future? Well, real quick, we're gonna go back over. So the first week, we did kind of a big introduction, overview. Number two, which we're gonna refer back today, heaven and earth, and talk about how the spiritual realm and the physical realm coming together. And there's this crazy, wonderful moment that happens in Scripture where God restores that. We're gonna cover that today. And then last week was the Old Testament, levels of rebellious warfare. And today is New Testament, so Jesus, disciples, and the church in a new valley. Okay, so just a reminder, on your notes, if you have questions along the way, write those down. We'll try and take as much time as possible at the end to take in your questions, and I'll try my best in order to answer those. Anyone here who's a Catholic? There we go. We were at a wedding yesterday, in Columbus, Ohio, a Catholic wedding. And we were all doing the Lord's Prayer, and we got to the end, right? Am I correct? Catholicism, they don't do the last part, right? And so we were all getting ready. There was the Protestant side and the Catholic side. You can hear all the Protestants bumbling, because all the Catholics, "Stop talking." And so with all that, but it was a beautiful wedding. Okay, now, we are going to start, obviously, we're gonna skip the whole birth of Christ. And if you were here, Shane Wood, he actually spoke a little bit about this, about the Great Gradus, which we're gonna kinda end with that today. And this idea of the birth of Christ, and that kinda setting the ground for the new work that's gonna take place. We're gonna start our journey today as Jesus is an adult. And Jesus goes to get baptized, and we had this incredible moment, right? Where the Spirit comes down as a dove, looks like a dove in that way, and comes down, and is proclaimed that Jesus is the Son of God. You have the voice of the Father speaking, and then something weird happens. At that moment, you think everything's just gonna take off, but it wasn't. The Holy Spirit leads Jesus into the wilderness, forty days and forty nights. Now, I know that's a new number for you, right? The Bible never talks about forty at all, right? And so now, there is a lot of imagery and a lot of connection with these forty days, obviously. And it's kind of a microcosm of the forty years for Israel. Well, this is a wonderful thing to actually study, this idea of wilderness. Maybe sometime if I talk to Seth and I'm going there, and to let me do the whole... I did a number of teachings, I don't know, four or fifteen years ago, on the importance of wilderness in our life. Because wilderness is something, from Genesis to Revelation, is one wilderness story after the other. Out of an eever kicked out of the garden, Abraham is called into the wilderness. Moses, it wouldn't have to do one forty year, he had to do two, right? He was a slow learner. Twice he had to go out into the wilderness. And dies, right? In the wilderness. Elijah's taken into the wilderness. John the Baptist, at the bat, where do we meet him? In the wilderness, wearing camel hair, right? And Jesus, of course, in this moment, is taken out into the wilderness. Paul spends fourteen years in the wilderness. And then he's talked about revelation. Where do we finish our story? John is in exile, on the island of Patmos, in a wilderness experience. So we should not believe in any way that we do not go through wilderness experiences. The question is, what do we learn from these wilderness experiences? Well, fortunately, Christ is gonna show the way for us today, and we're not gonna get, you know, full board on this, but this is an important piece of spiritual warfare, and we go through our own wilderness period. So in this wilderness experience, Jesus spends time in fasting and being alone in the wilderness. And then, at the end of the forty days, the satan, this accuser, shows up. And when he does, he gives them three different temptations. Now, one of them, we're gonna focus on today, is when he takes them way up high, and all of a sudden, somehow, allows them to see the kingdoms, right? Now, this is important, because we're gonna come back to this again. This is a reflection back to Genesis, chapter eleven, and the Tower of Babel, when all the people were divided out, and the Elohim were all over all those different things, like we discussed last week, okay? So now, the accuser is meeting with Jesus. And in the midst of this, he says, "Jesus, if you bow before me right now, I will give you all of these kingdoms," okay? So he knows that Jesus is coming to restore all things together, and wants Satan to settle. "Well, if you bow to me, I'll just give them to you. You don't have to do all this. You don't have to do all this stuff. If you just bow to me now, I will give them to you." Now, this satan, this accuser, is one of the leaders, as Pat Kelly and I were talking about back and forth last week, is this Elohim, as being one of the leaders of this Elohim. Now, also recognize, we talked about kingdoms. We talked about the geographic part. Remember, we had this whole thing about the geography, which is what we're talking about, the kingdoms. We're talking about the different peoples and the kingdom groups. Now, let's remember, what kingdom is in charge of Israel at this moment? Who's in charge? Rome is in charge. And we talked about Rome before. So Rome has their own Elohim. And in fact, Caesar believes himself to be a god. Remember, Seth talked about that. So he is the Elohim over this area, okay? Now, part of this is the question of who is going to be king? Who is going to be the head of all of this? So in this is a time where Jesus is gonna be confronted with taking an easy way out, so to speak, by bowing down before this Elohim, who knows who he is, and is willing to say, "I'm willing to give all of this if you will bow down to me." Now, one of the things we learned through this, we're gonna just take a couple of seconds on this, is just kind of a cool side note. So when Jesus is asked these different questions, every time he answers the accuser, he answers out of the book of Deuteronomy. Now, why is that important? Deuteronomy is the fifth book of the Torah. Deuteronomy is the last book before going into the promised land. It is Moses's three sermons, and his three sermons are to get them ready, right? So Moses's first sermon is, "Here's what God's done for you." Second, "Here's what God is doing for you now." And the third one is, "This is what God is going to do for you." So in this part, when he says, "Jesus, turn this stone into bread, because you're hungry." Well, man should not live by bread alone, but by the word of God. So what we learn here is the same thing the people of Israel had to learn before they went in. What does it mean to be totally dependent upon Christ? So each three of the temptations come back to, what does it mean to be dependent upon God and Christ? And what is Jesus answering? Jesus is answering, this is about dependency, okay? This is about dependency on God for everything. And then he's going to pull this out, all the way through the cross, the burial, and the resurrection. Now, in this, we have these, depending on which gospel you read, two say the devil, one says the accuser. So he's also being the slander, okay? Remember, we're talking about generally the same office of people. Now, I also want to remind you, is that if you wanna put this in your mind as a rebellious, spiritual being, okay? So remember, take out that picture, we're gonna talk about this in a minute. Take out that picture of what we think Satan is. And we learn places from this idea, that these Elohim are rebellious spiritual beings. And that's important to remember in this. Okay, now, we'll go to the next one, actually, we'll skip next, you have it in your notes. And the devil taking him away. Alright, so in this, the accuser says, "Bow before me." He is the leader of the Elohim, and who is to be king? Now, not long after this, Jesus now is actually going to answer some of these questions. Because early on in Matthew, chapter five through seven, right? Is the servant on the mount, Phlishen Reeluke, who says, "It's the Sermon on the Plains." Sound weird, right? So, but Jesus on the mountain, they're in the plains, they're down low. Anyone been there in Israel? Been to where they think the Sermon on the Mount is? It's really cool, because you can talk in flight, you can hear the sheep like miles away up there. It's pretty cool. Alright, so in this Sermon on the Mount, this is where Jesus is truly taking his authority. So in Matthew seven, it says, "And when Jesus finished these things, the crowds were astonished at his teaching, for he was teaching them as one about authority, and not as one of their scriptures." So how I kinda put the whole Sermon on the Mount is, this is Jesus's declaration of independence. It's him standing up, in the midst of these Jewish people, and he's saying, "You've heard it this way, but now I tell you, blah, blah, blah." And so he is setting up this declaration of independence, saying, "This is different, and with authority." Because he is the Son of God, and because he has authority over all things, he has been given authority over this new, and here's the big word, Jesus goes right to us, "a new kingdom." And who's in charge? Oh, well, yes, he is, but who's everyone else thinks in charge? Rome, right? These people have been oppressed, and before Rome ruled everything, Greece did. So as always with Israel, they disobey, and their enemies come in and take them over, over and over again. Rome was in charge. So now, listen to this language from the Jewish perspective. The Jewish perspective is Caesar is in charge. Even our money has Caesar on it. And then Jesus says, "There is a new kingdom, and he has authority." So this is a game changer, okay? And so we'll talk more about this in a minute, about how we're gonna tie all this together with Jesus's authority. So in this, he is changing their reality. And you remember, when we had our first session, we talked about the movie Matrix, which beautifully described like the world that we live in, but what was actually real in that. Okay, now, there's gonna be a slight change in the language of these evil spirits. And I just wanted to take a second and talk about Isaac's people on this. So Isaac on the demons, he believes, and there's a couple Scripture hints to this, that these Rephaim, okay, so remember, we had the Nephi lean, right? We had Goliath, we have the King of Og, which we're gonna come back to in a minute. But then we have these Rephaim, who are these large men of old who are warriors. So when they die, they are spiritual people in physical bodies. And so these evil spirits now are these unclean spirits that are going into people. When I read the description, it reminded me of Lord of the Rings, okay? Now, if you know Seth and I, it's either Narnia, or it's Lord of the Rings. So if you know anything about Lord of the Rings, there's a huge battle coming. They do not have enough people to fight evil. And the head of the elves comes to Aragorn, who is the king, and tells him, he needs to have a conversation. It's a cool part of the movies, and they walk into this mountain. And in it are these knights, these warriors, who at one time were supposed to come. They were supposed to do good, but they were cowards. And because of that, they were cursed. And they lived forever inside this mountain. And Aragorn here on the left goes in, and he pulls out the sword, and he says, "I demand your allegiance." So they are these warriors of old, and when you walk in, and you kill all these people, all their skulls are everywhere, it's really nasty, and all that. But in that moment, I'm saying, "Oh, this is like the Rephaim. These are those who were these evil spirits before." And Aragorn goes to them and gives them a chance to do what's good. And of course, they do what is good and help them back. So that's a good way to understand, some of these evil spirits are also called, in our text here, are unclean spirits, okay? So the clean spirits are the good people, right? They're the good spirits. So we were talking about last week, of kinda understanding how this all plays out. So I had a major little graph before. So the head of the world, there are these levels of spiritual rebellion. So this is a summary of both Isaac and Matthew. So level one is the divine council, which is the loyal and also rebellious Elohim. There is level two, which is this accuser figure, who we've just met, the Jesus. Level three are these territorial spirits that we talked about in Daniel ten. And then we have these fallen watchers, and that's who we're kinda talking about now, in a way, which is Genesis six, the Nephi lean. And then level five, at the bottom, are these demonic, unclean spirits that are active on earth. But they're kind of the foot soldiers. Does that kinda make sense? They're not, they're not the really strong princes over that area. They're more like the spiritual foot soldiers in that. Okay, so let's look at the first time that Jesus and one of the evil spirits meets. And Mark one, and immediately, there was this sin about a man, but an unclean spirit. And he cried out, "What have you to do with us?" Us, the Elohim, the evil Elohim, oh, Jesus of Nazareth. Question, "Have you come to destroy us?" Right? What does that imply?
They know who he is.
They know who he is, and...
And he has power.
And he has preparation, exactly, pushing. "I know who you are." Here we go. "You are the Holy One, the One who was set apart by Yahweh." But Jesus rebukes him, saying, this is kind of a fourth point, spiritual warfare, "Be silent." Now, if you've read much of the Bible, and Jesus' interaction with demons, how many times has he started with, "Be quiet"? Now, some believe, when Jesus is on the boat, remember this? He's tired, they go out on the sea, and Seth just did this sermon one year ago, so... And they're out on the boat, and Jesus is asleep, and this unusual storm appears. Now, remember, a couple of these guys are fishermen. They're used to storms, and even there freaking out. Now, some theologians believe this was not a natural storm. Some believe this was a demonically created storm. And if you were Satan, or the accuser, would this be a great moment? Jesus' disciples are on the boat? You can sink this whole movement in two seconds, correct? And how does Jesus respond? He stands up, and an airman says, "Shut up." He says, "Be quiet." And what happens? Storm goes calm. Isn't that interesting? So Jesus, though, does not want yet, right? He does this all the time. "Don't tell again. It's not yet time." So he tells this Elohim, this evil Elohim, says, "To be quiet." And then he commands him to come out. And the unclean spirit convulsing him, and cries out with a loud voice, and comes out. So for this guy, like a beautiful moment, in which he is saved in this time. Okay, now, we're gonna talk about one of my favorite Jesus demon moments. Jesus again is on the boat, they come up on the shore, in a Galilee area. And it's Jesus versus Legion, right? This is that great story. So they pull up, and all of a sudden, out of nowhere, who I call Crazy Harry. Crazy Harry comes up, right? He's naked, he's acting guts, right? And Jesus calmly goes up, and he says, "Who are you?"
I am Legion.
Right? Yeah, for a first tender, that's pretty good. Now, in this, right, and the disciples gotta be freaking out. You can see some of them, nothing like this. Now, here's what's interesting. First of all, this is not in a Jewish area. He is not landing in Judaism. He's landing in with the Gentiles on. And where he's landing is actually a graveyard. So in Israel, you can look, and there's all these little pockets of holes inside the sides of walls. And that's many times what they would use, especially for poor people, that's where they would put their bombs. So this guy is hanging out in the graveyard, right? Just wanna think about what that looks like for a moment, how nasty it is. And he's running around. Many times, they've tried to nail this guy, and they can't. He has all the strength of these demons inside of him. We're gonna talk about another cool story in a minute about that. And so he's got this superhuman strength, because these evil spirits are in him, okay? And so identifies who Legion is. He's wild, vacant, and strong. And he uses a Roman designation of how many are in him. So that's either two to five thousand, right? Now, the early church used to have this big argument. How many angels can stand on the head of a den? And I'm thinking, how many demons could be inside of you? Well, here's your answer, two to five thousand. That'd sound crazy, didn't it, to have that many inside of you? Now, the graveyard is, they say to the Son of God, and they say, "Don't send us to the abyss. Don't send us there." And like, "Where do you wanna go?" And he says, "They go into the pigs," right? Which is the first ever time there's been devil ham. Alright, so you have the picture in the back, you got the pigs, right? There's all these pigs, and they're going off the cliff, and ah, you know, squealing into the water. And then who knows where the spirits go from there. But here's the beautiful part, when they come back over to the guy, he's all peaceful. He has clothes on, right? And he actually asks Jesus, "Can I, can I come with you?" And Jesus says, "No." Here's what I want you to do, and this is one of my wonder evangelical, like evangelistic statements. And he looks to him, and he says, "Now, go back to your home. Go tell us what the Lord has done for you." And he's got quite a story, right? When he first comes down, people are like, "No!" He's got this. So there's a lot in that, but also, kinda think of the gospel part, which is, it's Jesus, every once in a while, reaching out to the Gentiles. He's making these little movements, and showing that he has authority in all places. Okay, now, we're gonna refer back to what we discussed last week, when we talked about Bashan, right? So we're talking about this place north of Jerusalem, called Bashan. It's down below Mount Hermit. And here, we talked about this is basically ground zero for evil activities. So it says, "If Jesus goes out, it's necessary to be a pillar body." Now, for the people around that, they literally refer to this place as like the gates of hell in Darmstadt, okay? This is an evil place, and things for thousands of years have happened in this place that are evil. They consider it the gates of hell, they think it's the underworld. One group even called it the place of the serpent there. And then to go back to our first session, and talking about where did we get this idea that Satan is this tall, thin, got a goatee and horns? And remember, we talked about, from the Greek god Pan, because he was mischievous in that. And literally, there is a temple to Pan at Bashan. Once it is? I don't think so. And that's where they got part of the idea of actually who, this picture that you and I have, of who Satan is. Okay, now, in this, Jesus is with his disciples. They come to say, "It's necessary to be a pillar body." So they're standing at the bottom, Mount Hermit, and they are at Bashan. And this is where the great conversation happens with them and the disciples. And so they are trying to figure out, right, about who they are, what their declaration is, and all that. And so we have this famous dialogue between Peter and Jesus. And Jesus answered him, "Blessed are you, son, for flesh and blood has not revealed this to you, but my Father, who is in heaven. And I tell you, you are here, and on this rock I will build my church. And the gates of hell will not stand against it. I will give you the peace of the kingdom of heaven, and whatever you bind on her shall be bound in heaven, and whatever you loose on her will be loosed in heaven." Think about what Jesus is saying, and where he is standing. This is a declaration of war. He is standing at ground zero, to where people believe this is where evil happens. And Jesus is saying, "What we're doing here, none of this will stand against him." How cool is that, right? Basically, he had a big flag right there, had a big Jesus flag, he would put that right there. He was declaring his authority, and what was going to happen within the church when this happens. And so he's going to turn that over. So this is, as one commentator put, this is assault language. Like, Jesus has declared, "No, I am out here, and I am in charge." And now, what's interesting, in this text, is it is now turning towards, his face towards Jerusalem. So the next part he talks about after this is, he starts alluding to, "I'm gonna have to go to Jerusalem. I'm going to have to die," right? So he begins this language of preparing them for his death on the cross. And his direct message to evil spirits. Now, this is what follows up, where Jesus starts talking about his death. And then Peter turns to Jesus, actually, this is kinda cool. He pulls Jesus aside. "Come here, Jesus. You can't be saying those things." He goes, "You can't be talking about that." And then what does Jesus say? "Get thee behind me, you accuser." I'm gonna change the language here. "Get me behind, accuser." That's what he said. And where does he say this? In Bashan, right? So get me behind you. So Satan doesn't want this language to happen. Now, isn't it interesting, let's think about ourselves for a moment. Let's think about how one moment, we can say something really good and wonderful, and then the next breath, say something really stupid. Anybody else do that besides me? Peter was known for putting his foot in the wrong, so it's wrong. But he's trying to do this, but, and the point here is, this is a huge declaration, and where he says it is hugely important. Now, after Jesus has this part with Peter, he then does the famous passage. "Here's what I need you to do, my disciples. Take up my cross and follow after me." So part of the declaration that Jesus is making, they just do, and here's the reference here. "Take up my cross," right? And so they don't understand what that means until Pentecost, okay? They do not put all this together because they do not understand yet what Jesus did on the cross. Now, as far as we want to understand is the training of the disciples. So as he calls the disciples, he is training them by his example in word. And so in John, well, first go to Matthew 10. And he called to him his twelve disciples and gave them authority over unclean spirits. To cast them out. Now, this is an interesting connection. "And to heal every disease and every affliction." Now, I didn't have time to go through all this. But how many times people read in scripture where disease and someone being sick and an evil spirit go together? It's really interesting how many times. But how many times Jesus has to cast out an infirmity that is also connected to an evil spirit? Then in John 10, 10, which we love to quote, is, "The thief comes to steal, to kill, and destroy. I came to damn life and to have it more abundant." So just this little part here, the disciples are being trained all the time. So Jesus, many times, is sending them out to preach about the kingdom of God, and then to also cast out unclean spirits, but then also to heal them. But notice here what he's doing. He is giving authority. Remember this whole divine council thing? Remember we talked about that? And Jesus was giving authority to these different Elohim. It is the nature of God to share authority with those whom he loves and cares for. Think about that. And guess who that includes, ladies and gentlemen? Yes. Right? We'll come back to that in about six seconds. Okay. So unclean spirits cast them out. And here we're named, the evil is named a thief. This is more about how he does things. But what is the point here for Jesus? Remember our creation, fall, restoration, glorification? What is this part? This is all about restoration. Jesus is restoring his kingdom. Okay. So in this, okay, the cross of Christ. Now, we can do weeks and weeks on this point, and we can't do that today. But it's going to take a couple of months. From Romans, "For your obedience is known to all, so that I have a choice over you. But I want you to be wise as to what is good and innocent, and to what is evil. And the God of peace will soon crush Satan under your feet." I watched my wife in the back. Have you, does anyone know this chorus? Anybody knows this? "And the God of peace will soon crush Satan." I'm going to give the light looks. Yes, I am worried. He's going to get him to say it. No, it's good. It's a great Peace Camp song. And everyone goes, "And the God of peace will soon crush Satan." I'll stain your feet so the whole group stains their feet, right? This is what Jesus did on the cross. Remember all the way back? Genesis 3:15, the first prophecy, right? "And there will be a time when you will crush him under your feet." The cross of Christ is that being done now on the cross of Christ. And so he is going to take the authority. Now, it's kind of a three-part, four-part system. We had the cross, the burial, the resurrection, and the ascension. It all ties together. John 12 says, "And now is the judgment of this world. Now will the ruler of this world be cast out. And I, where I am lifted up from the earth, will draw all people to myself." He said this to show by what kind of death he was going to die. First, let's go to the right hand side. Jesus is hung on a cross. Picture, all the people are here. Heaven is here. Who is in between? Jesus hangs between heaven and earth. Sound familiar? This is the Eden story. This is the restoration story. This is us looking up and who is going to bring it all together, restore heaven and earth together? Jesus did. Isn't that awesome? That is just a beautiful picture of looking up and then Jesus is hanging there and restoring us to the Father, restoring Eden once again. Jesus reverses the rebellion of man and Jesus overcomes the power of man. NT Wright, another fan of the big fan of NT Wright. Sin and death are the real enemies to be defeated. And indeed, they have been defeated on the cross and will be defeated fully and finally in Jesus' coming. So it's what is and what is still coming, right? Which is where you and I are at, in the midst of that. And so of the cross of Christ. Now, once this happens, we have the resurrection and we will have also the ascension. And so in the resurrection, right, Satan thinks he's won. The accuser thinks he's won. All the evil Elohim are pretty excited. We taking this guy down. Third day. Rolls away and new life and restoration is given because of the resurrection of Jesus Christ. And then, once his big final act, his battle, ascension. He goes up as our representative to sit at the right hand of God. And he has all authority. And as Philippians 2 says, "Then every people bow, and every tongue confesses that Jesus Christ is Lord." And he sits at the right hand of the Father for us to be with. Now, after this happens, the next big thing in the story, the apostles don't know what to do. They're kind of scared. And the Holy Spirit comes down. "And they were all filled with the Holy Spirit and began to speak in other tongues, as the Spirit gave them others." Now, there was a dwelling in Jerusalem, Jews devout men from every nation under the earth. Acts 2, 4, and 5. Now, this is the moment. What was Jesus planning to do the whole time? Ever since Genesis 11, when God had to scatter the languages because of their pride, because they wanted to make a name for themselves. What is he doing now? Jerusalem is absolutely filled with people from all of the known nations. There are representatives there. And now, the apostles, flames of fire. And what happens to language? What does everyone hear? Hear their own language. Everyone is hearing, as if everyone is speaking the same language. What is God doing? He is restoring the rebellion of Genesis 11. He is bringing it all together, all in one moment. How cool is that? Wouldn't you love to see that, right? That'd be crazy to happen. So he is bringing it together, one language unified together. And now the church will engage in spiritual warfare by obedience, no longer in rebellion, but will be a new community. So this is a huge moment. This isn't just speaking in tongues. This isn't just about the fight. This isn't just about Peter, James, and John being ordinary people. This is the beginning. This is what God wanted, a restoration of his people from all the nations. What happens to those people? Where do they go? They all go back. And now, with this new idea of who God is. Now, it's going to take a while, right? Did you know it took eight years to go to Promised Land? Like, to actually take over both Promised Land? Took eight years for Israel to do that, okay? Well, in this case, it's going to take a couple of years. Israel is going to start coming to Christ, and then they're going to move out to the Gentiles, right? And they're going to meet all these different people. Okay. Now, we're going to move to one of my other favorite, I said earlier I was going to talk about this. One of my other favorite evil spirit stories, right? So this is Paul, right? This is, I love it. This is like Bill Maher. So there were seven sons of a Jewish high priest named Steva who were doing this. But they, so they're like trying to cast out demons and all that. But the evil spirits said, "Hey, Jesus, I know. I've heard of Paul. Who are you?" They had no authority. "Who are you?" And the man in blue was the evil spirit, jumped on them, and mastered all of them, beat them up, overpowered them, so they fled out of the house naked and moving. Isn't that a great story? Don't mess with your cousin's mess, right? They were trusting in their own power and their father's lineage and who they were. Who did they not have, right? "Hold on, you're not the authority of Jesus. You're not with Paul. Who are you? So we're going to beat you up." So you have to be a little nervous about that. Okay. But this also speaks to the power of evil spirits. So Paul later, in his wonderful grace, shares before we're going to talk more about it to you, which is Ephesians 6. And I want to just highlight one part of this just today. "So put on the full armor of God, that you may be able to stand against the schemes of the accuser. For we do not wrestle against flesh and blood, but against..." Here we go. Here's the list. "Rulers, authorities, cosmic powers over this present darkness, and against spiritual forces of evil." And here's what's interesting. Can you all put those in one word? You think so? Why doesn't it? What's this telling us? It's not just one power.
Many representatives.
Many. Out of different, we said earlier, different levels of different evil spirits. Sometimes it's the privates, right? Sometimes the foot soldiers. Sometimes people who are a little bit stronger than them, but maybe have a little more power. Remember we spoke to last week? Remember when Jesus and disciples can't cast out this one demon? And they go to Jesus and say, "Hey, why can't we do this?" He goes, "Oh, hold on, hold on. This one only comes out with prayer and fasting." Oh. So when I read this and I try to explain this to people, there is a lot going on in the spiritual realm around us that we have no idea what is taking place. Correct? Now, remember point one from week one? Are we to fear them? No, not announced. We are not to fear them. Why? Yep. We have the blood of Christ, the authority of Christ. And I'm thinking if you are the seven sons of Steva. Right? Because we have authority as disciples of Christ over them. So it just reminds us, Paul is telling you in Ephesus. Now, what's happening in Ephesus? Ephesus has one of the strongest areas of temples. I think it's like thirty-five or forty temples, two other gods in Ephesus. So he's telling the people of Ephesus, "Listen, there is a lot of evil spirits here. And it was a major hub in the world at that time." Okay. Now, we're going to go down to Acts, chapter 16. "And as we were going to a place of prayer, we were met by a slave girl who had a spirit of divination, and brought her owners much game by fortune telling. She followed Paul and us, crying out, 'These men are the servants of the Most High God, who proclaim to you the way of salvation.' And this she kept doing for many days. Paul had become greatly annoyed." I pulled that. "Greatly annoyed." He turned instead to the Spirit. "I command you, in the name of Jesus Christ, to come out of me." And it came out that very hour. You remember what happens next? What's that? Their rulers get mad because they were making her a lot of money. Okay. How many points to this? Right? Have you, a family member, ever gone to some, to tear cards or a fortune teller? Have I ever had anybody do that? Yep. And did it come to you and say, "You wouldn't believe what they told me. They told me all about open gym and all the stuff. And no one else could have known that. No one else could have done that." Right? Who told them that? Evil spirits, right? Now, think about this. You're thinking, "Well, how they know so much about?" Number one, we'll talk about this in two weeks. Number one, evil spirits cannot reach your mind. But I can tell you that if you spend time with anyone, does it take long to figure people out? Does it take long to figure out people's weaknesses? Anybody here? None, right? You spend time with people, small, great, different things, and they're listening all the time. And they are going to use that information against you. So remember when we first started off lesson one? And I told you about Ben Alexander and about the nineteen fifties and sixties, right? He was leading seances. And there were these voices and ectoplasm and all this stuff. And the spirits were speaking through them and telling them real things about him. Was this person saying the right thing? Was this spirit speaking truth? Absolutely she was. "These men are the servants of the Most High God, who proclaim to you the way of salvation." What is the accuser's main thing? What does he love to do? Yes, and lie. Right? Now, we all know really good salesmen. And if you're a salesman, I apologize. Right? Here's what salesmen are good at, right? "Hey, how's it going, buddy? Very good." Boy, you looked after the name, look at you all bright eyed, pushing tail. What are you into there, right? Yeah, me too. That's how we get sucked into things, isn't it? We get sucked in. Some, it seems as if they're telling us the truth, right? It's a horrible thing. And so I was talking to someone the other day, and they just got a young lady, I say young, forty, and got scammed from a telephone company or something. And they lost tons of money, right? And they sound good, they sound professional, right? Well, humans, we can do that. Guess how good demons can do that? Right? They've been at this a long time. And they know how to use us and do this. Now, what's interesting is, Paul lets him know one for a while. "I don't know why." Right? But I do like that one, that line. Paul finally goes, "All right, I'm done." Turns around, takes care of it in a second. "I command you..." And what? "The name of Jesus Christ." Okay. Now. Okay. Now, we're going to move to a part of Paul's journey here. And then we're going to finish up with Revelation real quick. Couple things with Paul and evil spirits. So we're reading Ephesians 6. So this is the great section on the thorn in the flesh. So to keep you from becoming conceited, meet, they say, Paul. Because it's the passive greatness of Revelation. "A thorn was given me in the flesh." And he says this. What is it? "A messenger of Satan to harass me." Okay? Or oppress. "To keep me from becoming conceited. Three times I pleaded with the Lord about that, that it should leave. But he said to me, 'My grace is sufficient for you, for my power has made perfect in me this. Therefore I will boast all my gluttony of my weakness.'" So then what? "The power of Christ may rest on me." Now, real quick side note. Or dwell in me is the same thing. That is actually the same word as tabernacle. It's the same words as tent. And it's the same word in John 1:14. "When the word became flesh and dwelt among us." It's the same word. It's about inhabitation. It's about the presence of Christ. And that's what he's saying. But let's go back to beginning, because this is a little confusing, right? Now, a minute ago, we just said, "Paul looked at this woman and said, 'Come out,' and it came out." Three times, Paul asked for this spirit to leave. Guess what? Said no. Now, echoes of Job, right? This is an echo of Job. Job was allowed to be tempted in order for God's glory to happen. Paul, in order so he doesn't become too conceited, because let's be honest, we read some of Paul's words and we're a little worried about him sometimes, okay? He's a little strong sometimes. But one, this beautiful lesson. "My grace is sufficient for you, and my presence will be mine." That's the lesson. "Oh, that's funny. Dune Rannu." "Oh, that's funny. Wilderness." What's the whole point of this? Attachment to Jesus. Attachment to God. Paul was learning. And you should reread that passage this week, it's fabulous to read. "That his power may rest on me." Then, we have in 1 Peter, spend a little time in Peter for a moment. So, he says, now he's speaking to a very persecuted group of people. "Be so reminded, be watchful. Your adversary, the devil, prowls around in a roaring line, seeking someone to devour him. Resist him, defer in your faith, knowing that the same kind of sufferings are being experienced by your brother throughout the world. And after you have suffered a little while, the God of grace, who has called you to His eternal glory in Christ, will Himself restore, confirm, strengthen, and establish you. To Him be dominion, authority, language, forever and ever. Amen." So, we have to remind ourselves, in spiritual battles, resist the evil one, stay faithful to Him. And what is the promise? Christ Himself will restore you, confirm you, strengthen you, and establish you. James pipes in. James 4, "Submit yourselves therefore to God; resist the devil, and he will plead for you. Draw near to God, and he will draw near to you. Cleanse your hands, you sinners; purify your hearts, for you are devil-minded." So, again, resist, walk away, do not be a part of it. Now, part of our big question, I think Patrick brought this up two weeks ago at the end. And so, in our Revelation study, which we've been talking about, which says the teaching on, there's this part of Revelation 12, and we talked about that it says, now Satan there, and is lioning with the great dragon and aligns him with the serpent back in Genesis 3. So, I wanna take just two minutes and talk about it. So, let's read the passage. Pay attention to how the language is used there. "And the great dragon was thrown down. The ancient serpent, who is called the devil, Satan, the deceiver of the whole world, who has thrown down, who was thrown down from here, and his angels were thrown down with him." Now, remember earlier in Ephesians 6, Paul uses all these different words to describe what is able in the spiritual realm? John is doing that again. John is using it this way. "There's a great dragon, and that ancient serpent..." And so, now again, Old Testament, remember Shane Wood was there, all this imagery from the Old Testament. Now, notice this, and we're gonna use our new language here. "Who is called," we're gonna come back to that. "Who is called the deceiver, and he is called the accuser." And he goes again to say, "The deceiver." Right? Remember Revelation? Remember what we learned from Shane Wood and what they were learning there? "They were thrown down, his angels transferred, translate messengers." So, all of these words are all words describing these Elohim, these head Elohim, right? And using all his language, right? Accuser, seaver, snake, things. Now, here's what's interesting. John uses this language. He says, "They are called these things." That's important. Going back to Acts, chapter 11. Acts, chapter 11 says this. "And in Antioch, those who followed Jesus were first called..." Anybody know? Christians. How many times is the word Christian used in the Bible? That's close. You caught up on my cynicism there. People are saying, I don't know, thirty, forty times, maybe? Three. Three times the word Christian is used. Acts 11, where it says, "They were, those who followed Jesus were called Christians." At the end of Acts, I forget if it's Agrippa or Festus, we'll go with Agrippa. And he says, "Oh, Paul, do you think you can so quickly, like, convince me to become a Christian?" And then Peter's the third one, he says, "When you are persecuted as a Christian." All three times, the language is from those outside calling us Christians. It's not what they call themselves. You know what they call themselves? Forty-four times, and then, well, this is true, but forty-four times in the book of Acts alone, "Those who follow Jesus, I think of the great commission, are disciples." Know you therefore making? Not Christians. Make disciple and adherents and students of Jesus. That's what we're called to do. Now, same language. They were first called Christians. John's language in Revelation, "They are called..." Why is he saying this? Because the people refer to them as the Satan, the deceiver, right? That's what they're calling these evil rebellious spirits. And what he's referring to is finally when they are going to be totally destroyed. Okay. Last little work, I always leave you a spiritual discipline, we'll take a few questions. And this week is on fasting, right? Disciples, this spirit only comes out with prayer and fasting. Richard Foster says that fasting is feasting. Isn't that a great thing? We fast for food that we may feast on Christ. Now, we're back to that dependency word again, I'm trying to help the kids with that. This is all about dependency on Christ. If I'm dependent on Christ, do I really need to worry about all sorts of stuff? No. Right? And that's the whole door of the question. Okay, questions? A few minutes, anybody have any questions? With the yes, ma'am. And many times, when evil spirits will speak, many times, like, they'll start off with something that actually you and I would agree with. And even people who are against Christ, right? Sometimes I get a little smartened about people who are talking about Jesus. And in my life, it's also that wonderful verse, "As long as Jesus is being proclaimed." And I go, mm, but I wanna complain. And I remember, yes. So, yes, and it's a good sales pitch. We'll go back to that in hours, that if I can speak a little bit of truth and I can hook you, then you can listen. So, if I go to a fortune teller and they tell me a little bit of truth, then I think everything that person's talking to me is true. And it'll set me up, right? Yeah, good question. Anybody else? And so, which is next week, by the way, we're gonna be talking about Mormons next week. And the only thing about the Mormons, they're kind of upheaval at the moment. Their heavy mob just died and now they're trying to figure out a replacement. But Barb will be speaking on that. So, I'll be taking the next first fifteen minutes next week, talking a little bit about church history, how we kinda got to where we are churchwise and spiritual warfare. And then Barb's gonna take about a half hour and talk about Mormonism, so you can ask all your cool questions. Well, it'll take more than an hour, to be honest, but that's, we'll try to, yes, sir? Yes, correct. He was never called the Satan. He was a rebel Elohim that was against God and that, so. Egypt, sir?
Yes.
Yes. So, well, all of them are Elohim. So, all spiritual beings, including God himself, is an Elohim. He is Yahweh, who is the most high. So, even that scripture of Jesus, that first one, says, "You are son of the most high." Right? So, and that Elohim. Now, of those Elohim, of those who went against God, they are accusers, deceivers, right? And go back to John 10:10. What do they desire? To steal, kill, and destroy. So, part of it is, and we had that kind of question with Patrick last week, even, we have, we can't, part of the deception is thinking there's only one revealing. Does that make sense? This is a whole bunch Elohim, all over the world, right? All these different nations. So, we talked about last week, in Egypt, all those different gods, in Egypt were all different Elohim's that were all rebellious. So, when Moses comes in, he claims Yahweh as the most high over all those Elohim's. And so, the scripture will go, oh, this Elohim, he is an accuser. He is a deceiver. And naming out, so maybe think of it more as a job script. Does that make sense? This is just what they do, but there are different levels to them. Like, in Daniel 10, there is a prince, right? There is a prince there, and so, he's higher up.
Isn't that an important distinction, considering that all of the Elohim's were persecuted?
Yes.
They are all under, but God Almighty, He created them, they were rebellious.
Yes, yes. Very good. So, they are all created by God and they were all there to serve God. And a portion of them rebelled against God. And so, we don't wanna get into numbers, because we don't really know the numbers. But there's a wonderful section of good ones who keep following the most high, and then we have those who have rebelled. Similar as we talked about last week, which is, there are three rebellions, which also talks about the rebellion like a battle, but that represents what is also taking place in the spiritual realm. So, they went out, each of them had their own Elohim's who were a part of it. Does that make sense? Good question. Yes, sir?
Good question about the thorns. The more of the evil spirit thing for a human.
It's a messenger from Satan. There you go, right there in the text.
But can that be in the elements? Or is it?
Oh, I guess it could. I think some, a lot of people, right, theologians over the years, have, I've heard someone say, like, Paul Singles was a thorn in the thyme for that. I think I read something once about they thought it was Isaiah or different things like that. It just doesn't name exactly what it was. "Other than, it was evil spirits, in order to help all of his pride, had to you get too big for the precious." And he brings them back to what? To dependency, right? The presence of Christ. For me, I find that hugely important. Hey, anybody else? Yes?
I mentioned it didn't make sense. In the very beginning, he said, as a Christian, we cannot be evil spirits, that's what he meant.
Possess, correct. They can oppress, they cannot possess.
So, the thorns can call that what evil spirits, how is that possible with evil spirits?
Oh, what he means is, think of a thorn, being like pricking you. It's like, it's like pushing animal. Oh, think of it being inside. Correct. Yep. Yep, good question. Yep, yep. Yeah, so it's not in him. It's like if I walk through the thorns or have briars or something, right? Yes. And in two sessions, we're gonna talk about the difference between oppression and possession and what does that mean for us? Like, how do we create this fact, right? How do we know that and name that and be able to talk about that?